Good evening and welcome to the 2022 Shakopee City Council Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we're gathered at River Valley Church. My name is Michael Clemm. I'm an attorney with the law firm Helmuton Johnson, and I will serve as moderator tonight. All candidates for Shakopee City Council were invited to participate. With us this evening are Ziad Abdi, Councilmember Angelica Contreras, Jim Delaney, Nathan Dole, Ian Osborne, and Ashley Sepulvado. The candidates are arranged in alphabetical order. The candidates have already recorded video interviews to introduce themselves to the community, and you can see those online. So the candidates will not make opening statements this evening. I strongly encourage you to watch the videos, where they have more time to share additional background information and answer additional questions. Tonight, the candidates will be asked a series of questions. They will each have 60 seconds to answer each question unless we know otherwise. For the first question, we'll begin with Ziad Abdi. Why are you running for city council?
Thank you very much. I'm Ziad Abdi. The reason I'm running city council because I would like to represent the community of Shakopee. I want to be Shakopee the good place to live, the good place to walk, the good place for the safety. We know there is a lot of issue for safety in the Twin Cities area. So we don't want it for that. I want to make sure Shakopee will be the safest here. For the, if you know the last history, Shakopee was the third place for the safety in the United States. But I want to be in the first place, Shakopee the safest. Thank you.
Angelica Contreras, why are you running for reelection to city council?
Thank you. Well, I want to continue to do the best, the great things that I feel that I've been doing. And first of all, you know, to continue to better reflect the community I serve and to work to support our law enforcement and encourage a respectful two-way relationship with our residents. Continue to do what's best for our community, not individual interests. And then continue to support our local businesses so they can, you know, continue their growth. And then for sure, continue to be the present, to be feet on the ground, which I know I've done, to be that presence in the community that I've been doing till today.
Jim Delaney, why are you running for city council?
Well, I got in this race because of, I got kind of a, I guess fed up with our taxes and debt. And our voice is not being heard on the city council as it presently is. My other reason is I have volunteerism. I think I'm at the point now where I want to get back to my community by serving on council, but also addressing my concerns still with the debt taxes and our voices not being heard. Again, I don't think that's the same. I think if we look at the votes that are cast, which I'm sure we'll get to a little bit later, our votes that are cast, our voices are not being heard. That's why I'm running.
Nathan Dole, why are you running for city council?
Thank you for the question, and thank you to the Chamber and Visitors Bureau for hosting this today. I know it's been a long day, so we really appreciate all your work. My name's Nathan Dole, and I'm running because Shakopee is my home, and it's where I'm building my family. And so I want to work to make Shakopee the best that I think that we can make it be. I think that means safe streets, great schools, a thriving local economy, and a booming sense of community. And I think those are all values that all Shakopeeans want to see in our community.
Ian Osborne, why are you running for city council?
I'm running for city council because I believe I can do the best job. I can keep taxes low. I can try to maintain the sense that we've been going on. And I feel that we're in the wrong direction right now. I feel that there are some missteps by the current city council to not fully reflect what people want and need as was made clear with the recent ban on vaping products and THC. I'm looking to reflect the voice of the people in the way that has not been done up to this point.
Ashley Sepulvado, why are you running for city council?
Thank you. I'm running to very simply serve my community. My husband and I have raised a handful of children here and also now a grandbaby. So the city means a great deal to me. My husband has been in Shakopee for quite some time, and I'm a transplant. I came to Shakopee after a difficult time in my life, and this, the city has given me a home and given me my identity. And so to the best of my ability, through my experience, through my knowledge, through my skillset, I plan to give back everything that I can to the city that they've given to me.
Jim Delaney, you will be first for this next question. What skills and experience would you bring to the city council?
Skills and experience? Couple of things. One, listening. I think you need to listen to the residents, listen to constituents as far as concerns they do have. And second, just my background. Background of program manager, background in engineering. Also, that leads to, you know, like decision-making. I think we make decisions for the city. Look at the long-term and short-term impacts of those decisions. Look at the pros and cons of those decisions. I don't think that's being done now. I think when we, when the city council presently goes to vote, they vote as a block, and they vote consistently four to one. I don't think they look at the short-term and long-term impacts. And that's one of the things I'm bringing.
Thank you. Nathan Dole, what skills and experience would you bring to the city council?
Great question, and it's one that we should ask of those asking for our votes. And so in my professional life, I get to travel throughout the state of Minnesota, and I get to work with county-level, city-level, and township-level governments, as well as developers who are hoping to improve their local community. And essentially, we just hash out the details and try to get stuff done for the betterment of the community. And so I have a lot of experience working with a variety of different local governments and local residents and try to find the best solution that suits the community. And so I would do no different here in Shakopee.
Ian Osborne, what skills and experience would you bring to the city council?
Well, I am a defense attorney. I work for the, the public advocacy group. I, I do, I represent people who can't very well give a voice themselves because they can't afford one. And I want to be that voice for the voiceless, for the people of the community of Shakopee, which I live in now. I think that is something that I can bring that a lot of people cannot. I have talked with people as a job, I think for a living, and I believe I can bring these experiences and help the community as a whole.
Ashley Sepulvado, what skills and experience would you bring to the city council?
City-related, I have been in the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and Planning Commission for just over four years now. I participated in the planning of the Parks Master Plan, as well as supported the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Professionally, I also have over 12 years of experience coaching large-scale teams, bringing people together, compromising, facilitating conversations, delivering results, budgeting. So I think I would be a very good addition to the city council.
Ziad Abdi, what skills and experience would you bring to the city council?
First of all, the city council is first is a board. It's establishing for the budget. My experience, I have, I'm the candidate for the master MPA for the business and leadership. I have skills or experience of managing managerial accounting. I have a knowledge for experiencing accounting, business. All those one, it will help me to control the budget for the Shakopee. So I have a good relationship for that. And the other thing I can understand for the community, I'm the good listener. So I have experience for the community. I have experience for the background medication. So I'm candidate for master, business, and budgeting and leadership.
Angelica Contreras, what skills and experience would you bring to city council if re-elected?
Thank you. Well, mainly my four years of experience that I've learned. When you walk in there, it's a different, it's a different story. You're hearing, you tell one thing of what you're gonna do, but when you're there, it's different. So I've sat on boards, many, you know, many boards, and we've made tough decisions. But above all, I do, I'm, the idea that I like to be on the ground and listening to our constituents and hearing them. Yes, sometimes it's not, you don't make that decision as they want because it's not what favors all Shakopee, not just an individual interest. So sometimes, you know, those decisions are hard, but you have to make them.
Ian Osborne, you'll be first for this next question. What is the most important issue facing Shakopee right now?
Well, I would say the most important issue is the growing threat of bin security that is all around us. We have big cities near us that are falling into chaos. And we need to do what we can to secure ourselves by standing up with the police, giving whatever they need, ensuring that we keep our streets safe.
Ashley Sepulvado, what is the most important issue facing Shakopee right now?
I'd like to think of them as opportunities versus issues. I think we have a lot of opportunity in general to grow the city and continue doing some things we do very well and perhaps rethink some of the things we aren't doing so well. I think we have an opportunity to continue to keep our levies low. We are one of the lowest tax communities in the state and half of comparable cities nearby. I think we need to continue to maintain support for our fire and police departments. Additionally, I think we need to potentially move up for consideration a specific project that's in our CIP plan for the Innovation Center to help promote economic growth and educational training for post-secondary students.
Ziad Abdi, in your view, what is the most important issue facing Shakopee right now?
We have a lot of issue facing for the zoning. It's very important for that. We have issue for the zoning. If we wanted Shakopee to develop, to build a lot of houses, there is a limit for zoning. And we have an issue for the, limited for the budget. If we are, because the budget is very limited, and the population of Shakopee is growing. For the last 10 years, it was less than what we are now. And it's 44,000 right now. And then the next five years or 10 years, it's gonna be more than or double than for that. For the zoning and the budget is, is one of the issue, and the housing. So also, some community, when I listen, they are facing for a large community. They want housing, availability for housing. Sometimes also, according to the Shakopee, the neighbors, seriously, Edena or the other one, is lower rate for the schools. So we have a lot of issue for that.
Angelica Contreras, what is the most important issue facing Shakopee right now?
Thank you. I'll be honest, I know we don't talk about it much because we're not a human services provider. But mental health is one of the biggest issues that we have all over. And it brings our police department in this. And supporting our police department to have a person who is an embedded person, a social service person who can ride along with them to take these, when you get a crisis call, a mental health crisis call, they can go out and help in those situations. That is very important. That's something Shakopee, we've heard of the situations happening just, you know, weeks prior. And we need to be able to help. And I mean, there's many, but that right there. And I was in a program, in a class just a couple of days ago. And how important is that? It's very important. So that is something I'd like to help our police department. So they're not doing those, taking those costs personally, but having someone else who come out there and de-escalate and help those situations.
Jim Delaney, what is the most important issue facing Shakopee right now?
I think our city is well situated for a lot of things, but I think what is missing though is representation for all the city. And when I say that, I mean, when the decision is made currently, all aspects, all areas of the city aren't represented when that decision may impact them directly. So I think it's time our city moves towards. I, I think that is the best move. That way, we allow all aspects of the city to be represented in decisions that are made, I guess, on the city's behalf as a whole, but also may impact the individual neighborhoods. So I think representation is one of the key items right now. I think the answer to that is to move towards.
And Nathan Dole, what is the most important issue facing Shakopee right now?
Yeah, I'd just like to start by thanking Councilwoman Contreras for the comment on mental health. That is a very important issue that doesn't get enough attention. And it was great seeing you at the county's LEC meeting this week. But to me, the most important issue is the financial security of our residents. And in a post-COVID world with record inflation, where the value of our dollars is less than it even was two years ago during COVID, and an economic recession where there's a lot of uncertainty about the job market and about prospects, I think we have to make sure that we support our residents in every way. I think that means responsible taxation that fits the current climate. And instead of, if our residents are not feeling secure, the natural consequence is it's felt in our businesses as well with people choosing not to patronize those businesses. And then as a consequence, there may potentially be layoffs. So that is priority number one for me.
Angelica Contreras, are there any areas where you believe the city should increase or decrease spending?
Thank you. Well, we are very conservative when we do spend. There's, I'm trying to think. Good question. I'm trying to think here. I feel that we're conservative. I mean, we, we have our, seriously, we continue to be the lowest, you know, tax community in the Twin Cities metro area for the, you know, for the last five straight years. So I don't feel that we're spending and taxing and doing things we're not supposed to. I feel we're actually pretty stable.
Thank you. Jim Delaney, are there any areas where you believe the city should increase or decrease spending?
I think that one area that the city could probably increase would be our law enforcement. And not from, from perspective of we are becoming more of an entertainment district. And when the crimes do happen in the city, it's typically, some of the crimes are a result of people that don't live in our city. And when police respond to that, though, they're, we're actually paying for it out of our own pockets. So I think that's one place we could increase it. And I think it should be paid for by the venues themselves to help foster or pay for that. So that's, that's the area of the thinking to increase.
Thank you. Nathan Dole, are there any areas where you believe the city should increase or decrease spending?
I wouldn't advocate currently for an increase or decrease in anything specific. At present, I think it is vitally important to maintain our essential services, including law enforcement. I think that's especially important. As Jim said, that we are an entertainment hub, and we get a lot of people from out of town. And I think this just ties in with my last point, that we need a responsible tax policy to make sure that we are responsibly asking our residents to pay what we can afford in these essential services. So yeah, like I mentioned, nothing that comes to mind at present, but we need to make sure we continue our responsible tax practices.
Ian Osborne, are there any areas where you believe the city should increase or decrease spending?
Right now, we are spending money to have businesses come here and open job, open job. And they already want to come. We're throwing money at them. And that is waste. And it doesn't need to happen. That money can be back in your pockets. They want to come here, they want to build. And they want you to spend the money anyway. You're gonna have it to spend at them. I, I don't know why that we have this increase in spending to incentivize businesses to move here when they already are coming. It doesn't make sense to me that decrease could be made instantly, and it should be made right now.
Ashley Sepulvado, are there any areas where you believe the city should increase or decrease spending?
I think we need to be smart about our spending, one way or the other. I think it's important to offer incentives to businesses to come here, whether we're seeking it out or they want to be here or not because it gives them the opportunity to grow, and that money comes back to us. I do think we need to keep in mind just general cost of living increase. Myself, as an employee of a company, every year, my health insurance goes up. So by that matter, our city, our city workers, their health insurance is gonna go up. Cost of living is gonna go up. Our gas prices are out of control. We can't control that, but we can control the spending of it without losing our essential services. So I think we just need to be smart about where we're spending and making sure we're keeping those costs into consideration.
Ziad Abdi, are there any areas where you believe the city should increase or decrease spending?
First of all, for the increase, it depends on the size of the population of Shakopee. So if we wanted to increase for the development, the housing, so we need more housing, we need more budget. Also, the other thing we need for the decreasing, I can say it's an issue for the utility. So still, the community, they would like to decrease the utility for electricity or the water for that. So because we now still, we are in good shape according to the neighbor cities, but still, the community, they need lower for that.
Nathan Dole, you'll be first for this next question. Are there any areas where you believe, I'm sorry. What are your long-term goals regarding business and economic development in Shakopee?
Yeah, that's very important for Shakopee specifically, just because we are an entertainment hub. And I think post-COVID, we need to empower our local businesses. And I think first and foremost, what we need to do is make sure that we have our businesses running at full capacity. I think we need to support businesses and hiring, making sure that there's a good workforce pool. In addition to that, I think that we need to do everything that we can to help fill those vacant offices because unfortunately, COVID did have an adverse effect. And we need to, I think the primary goal of the city as it relates to businesses is bringing those businesses back and helping our tax base even further.
Ian Osborne, what are your long-term goals regarding business and economic development in Shakopee?
I think that we're on a good path business growth-wise. I think that with sustainable growth, it's more the model we need to follow than this chaotic rampant growth we've had that's really out of control. We're paying businesses to come here. So we're expanding too fast. That's what happened in Minneapolis. They got too big for their bridges, so to speak. They have everyone coming in to work there, and they, the way the crime is out of control there. We need to have this sustained growth so the infrastructure we have can handle it.
Ashley Sepulvado, what are your long-term goals regarding business and economic development in Shakopee?
I have two specific things. So going back to what I said earlier about the Innovation Center that's currently in our CIP long-term plan, I would really love to see that get bumped up in the priority ranks right now. I think that would do a lot of benefit for our community and bring businesses in to help train, offer services. There's two post-secondary schools, including Minnesota State University that is wanting to partner with us here. So I think that's a number-one priority. Additionally, I think we need to continue to cultivate and maintain our relationship with our local businesses. We have created so many fantastic family events in the last couple of years, Rhythm on the Rails. Not only does it bring our community together, but it brings people to our community and see how great our community is. And the Chamber of Commerce, you guys are outstanding. You have something going on every week, and we just, we need to continue to maintain those relationships.
Ziad Abdi, what are your long-term goals regarding business and economic development here in Shakopee?
Here's two things. According to the business fulfillment, one thing, we can encourage our local community business. And the other thing, we can attract the non-local community business. The first, my priority is to give opportunity our local small business owners. I can understand the importance for the small business owner because I'm the business owner, I'm the small business owner. I'm the member of the downtown Shakopee business. So there, we need to help, we need to support. So the other thing, if we, also, we need to attract the other business, huge companies. So we, our community Shakopee, they can get jobs. Also, the city of Shakopee, they will get even more better. So we have to, we have to see those two options. First, we have to give the first opportunity to the local business, small business owners. And the second one, we have to give the other chance to the other huge companies in Minnesota or other, whatever.
Angelica Contreras, what are your long-term goals regarding business and economic development in Shakopee?
Thank you. To continue to support our local businesses, the ones we have now, you know. We can do it ourselves, I said it many times. We have these social medias that can reach so many different people. Use those to continue to bring, you know, other people from other, from other cities so they can enjoy what we have. And then I will add to what Ashley, Mr. Pulvera said. We do have that innovation hub that we need to continue to get those funds because that is where we will educate our own kids to get those, you know, to get those skills they need to open, to continue to even open up their own businesses, but to go even into RAR and to Canterbury, those businesses that are already here and continue to prosper, prosper those businesses.
Jim Delaney, what are your long-term goals regarding business and economic development in Shakopee?
I think our city is actually well situated to actually bring businesses in. We have a population, so it's a cross-set of skillsets. We're located off 169. We're to get goods and services in and out. We're near airports, so we've got to do business travel. I think those are things that bring people into Shakopee, bring business into Shakopee. I think the one thing we can do is just maintain our public infrastructure and look at the zoning as it comes up to allow the businesses to open as needed and operate.
Ashley Sepulvado, you'll be the first for this next question. What is your opinion of tax increment financing?
I think as long as we're smart about when we use it. I don't think it's something we should use lightly or necessarily sparingly. I think you look at two examples of, of recent ones that were very successful. You look at the RAR Maltean. They were able to expand and create more jobs for our residents. And then you look at Canterbury and the growth that they have seen over the last several years and the attractions and the events that that is gonna bring in, that's gonna bring in real revenue. It's gonna bring in jobs, and it's gonna continue to increase the land of big fun here in Shakopee.
Ziad Abdi, what is your opinion of tax increment financing?
That's a good question. Everything, it depends on for the ability we have. So I believe we can attract the community to establish a business, to attract the community for their opinion, experience. We need to bring a lot of a business to create a jobs. And first of all, in all, we have to make sure Shakopee is the best place for the safety. So if we make, make sure for that, for the safety, there is a lot of community, they move in the Shakopee. There is a lot of business, they can move in the Shakopee. And the diversity is one of the very important for that. So we need, we need to keep going for that. Shakopee is the good place.
Angelica Contreras, what is your opinion of tax increment financing?
So TIF to me is a tool that we have in the Shakopee toolbox that we can use when there's a developer, you know, or a company, sorry, a company that would like to come into Shakopee and is bringing high-paying jobs. And, you know, we'll take in residents who live here in Shakopee. We can, they can live here, they can work here and live, you know, with the, with the high-paying wage, you know, enjoy life and keep on moving and, you know, live that American dream. So I'm in favor of it. Used wisely.
Jim Delaney, what is your opinion of tax increment financing?
I'm not a fan of TIFs, and I'm not a fan of abatements. If they are used, I think it should be used sparingly. And I say that because it's, it costs the taxpayers money. We're basically paying for the goods and services they're not paying for during that time. I think if those, they do get voted in or if they do manage to make their way into use, that they, we need to understand the long-term and short-term impact and the cost to the taxpayers, to us, when we implement those. You know, I hear you saying about high-paying jobs. You got, if that is the goal, then once that company gets to a certain point as far as their income coming in, then there should be some way to get out of that, so it's not still hitting the taxpayers. Again, I'm not a fan of TIFs. I think it should be used sparingly.
Nathan Dole, what is your opinion of tax increment financing?
Yes, as has been mentioned up here, we do need to be smart about it. It needs to be heavily scrutinized. And I think the most important thing is if there is a company that wants to develop here in Shakopee, they need to demonstrate that there is going to be significant job growth. There's going to be significant economic growth as a result of the TIF. And essentially, I would advocate for it not just being a handout as a last-ditch effort to court a company to come to Shakopee. So I would agree with a lot of my counterparts up here that we should use it responsibly and sparingly.
Ian Osborne, what is your opinion of tax increment financing?
I'm also going to agree with most of the candidates here. When you're asking residents, citizens to pay for businesses that they see no profits from, it better be a darn good reason. It better be bringing something to the community that was not here before. And it needs to be readily apparent that the benefits are outweighed by, or not outweighed by, the cost of the citizen. And that is one thing we have to use very sparingly with TIF and the tax increment financing. I mean, it again has to be very rare and that's a very good reason for it.
Ziad Abdi, you will be the first for this next question. What is your vision for Shakopee's future?
That's a good question. I think my vision would be Shakopee have to be the first place of safety in the United States. The first place, a good place to work, good place to live. Then, so also we need our opportunity, we need our kids to have a good education, good school, good health. So I want to be my, the first, the good for leave to Shakopee. So yeah, my fortune to create more jobs for that. Yeah, to develop for the Shakopee.
Angelica Contreras, what is your vision for Shakopee's future?
So my vision is the community to continues to be diverse. We're growing in diversity and for it to be a safe place to live, to have fun, for us to continue to grow. We are growing and, and, you know, I was listening to something and they said, well, it's not going to grow forever. Well, Shakopee still has a lot of growth to do. So we'll continue growing.
Jim Delaney, what is your vision for Shakopee's future?
I think a couple of things. One, for Shakopee to continue to grow, I think we should look at smart growth and balanced growth. We can't just have growth for the sake of growth. Also, I'm, we should keep our green space. I mean, to me, that's important. The people come in and they look at our city and they, it's, that small town is here was what brought me into Shakopee. And I think we need to at least try to maintain that. Our city is thriving. I think that's a, just from how things are now, our city is thriving. But in order to continue that, I think one thing we need to do is get to a reasonable, stable tax base and also try to minimize our long-term debt. But overall, overall though, I, again, I think smart growth is, is more important than just growth for the sake of growth, a pack and stack mentality as we've taken so far.
Nathan Dole, what is your vision for Shakopee's future?
I think we need to remember our small-town roots, but remember that we are a bigger city now. I think the most recent, the 2020 census put us at just under 45,000. And so I think we need to be reflective of a, of a bigger city now. And what I mean by that is specifically in our planning and zoning practices. I think we should be making policies, planning and zoning-wise, in our, in our entertainment districts and commerce districts to ensure that they're accessible for everyone and we don't have a mayhem with generally the parking situation, especially as you go downtown. I think that is a challenge for a lot of people and deters a lot of people from coming to spend their money and enjoy themselves here in Shakopee. And so that's something I'd like to, to work on, on the city council.
Ian Osborne, what is your vision for Shakopee's future?
Well, Shakopee is a great place. It's absolutely wonderful. I love it here, I've moved here, and I want to keep that going. It's not like every place else that I've been to around these parts. It's a one-of-a-kind place and it's, it's so unique because it's safe, because there is a sense of community that I don't see in big city. So where we, we may be coming more like big city. I agree with Mr. Dole here. We need to maintain that sense of community before we lose ourselves.
Ashley Sepulvado, what is your vision for Shakopee's future?
I agree with many of my fellow candidates here, and I'll just add a few things addition to that. I think ultimately we need to continue to march toward our 2040 comp plan. There was a great amount of planning and work that went into that, and, and we did plan for this growth, I believe appropriately. And we often are reevaluating our zoning regulations to continue to alter that. So just because it's planned doesn't mean it can't change. I want to continue to focus on the safety of this community. I can't tell you how, while I sleep at night knowing that we have one of the lowest crime rates, it, it makes me and my family feel safe. I want to also focus on making sure we continue to grow in diversity and inclusion. You know, and I agree with Mr. Delaney, growth for the sake of growth is not effective. So I think we just need to be smart in what we bring in and ultimately continue to uphold our reputation as the land of big fun.
Our time is running out. Anyone whose questions have not been answered should contact the candidate's campaign offices. You can find more information about the candidates at the chamber's website, shakopee.org. Each candidate will now have one minute for their closing statement. The order of closing statements was selected by drawing. And we will begin tonight with Ashley Sepulvado.
Thank you again, chamber, for hosting this, putting this on. We appreciate all that you're doing to help educate voters during this. For me, I, there's a couple of things that I feel make me stand out. I, I very much have a connection to this city. All my kids have either gone to school, are going to school, or will go to school in this city. They all have worked or will work. I'm sure they all play, so I care very much about that. I have the knowledge and the experience to do this job and I think do it really well. I have the commitment to do it. I have the passion and compassion and empathy to do it. And ultimately, I have a growth mindset. Again, at the beginning, I look at this as an opportunity. I don't look at it as issues. There's always room to grow, not only in our city, but in myself. And ultimately, I'll get stuff done.
The next closing statement will be from Ian Osborne.
Yes, my name is Ian Osborne, and I want you to elect me because I'm going to do a darn good job. They ask what sets us apart. Well, I'm six foot nine, I can change labels anywhere. That makes me one of a kind in that regard. But in all seriousness, I can do a great job with all this stuff. I, I can parse problems out, that's what I do for a living. I speak for the voiceless. I can fix the disconnect between city hall, who is not listening to the main people when they pass bans on vaping products, THC products that hinder our own businesses. And the town would really hurt anyway. So I think I can do a good job making the common sense decisions that mean you will not see or hear from the government because you will never problem with them. And isn't that what we all want anyway? A government we don't have to rely on? Thank you very much.
Next will be Angelica Contreras.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank the chamber for this opportunity and everyone who's out here in the audience who took the time to come and listen to us. My main thing is I want to continue to reflect the community I serve, for sure, and then continue to support the businesses that we, that I have till this day. I mean, constantly, I'm out there on the ground, and I think I've, I've made sure everybody knows that I try. I'm, I'm out there, if you need me, you know where to find me. I'm in at events, I'm different places, always trying to represent and be that face of Shakopee. I will also continue to, again, you know, support as much as I possibly can and be there for our businesses. So, um, thank you.
Ziad Abdi.
My name is Ziad Abdi. I'm a small business owner Shakopee. I would like, I want to be on the city council for the diversity. Diversity is our strong for the community. Shakopee is growing, so we need a different diversity in Shakopee, different experience, different culture, all those working together, so it's going to be a good shape for the city council Shakopee. So I will make sure to listen to Shakopee, the forums. I will make sure to bring their issue to the city. I will make sure to encourage and support the small business owner. I can understand what's important for our small business owner. I can understand what's important for the diversity in Shakopee. I can understand what's important in Shakopee, what they need. I can understand what is important to Shakopee, the lower community or the senior community, what they need. So I'm a community active, so I will make sure to work together. I will make sure to discuss everything if they are elected. Thank you very much.
Nathan Dole.
This can't be overstated, but thank you again to the chamber and visitors bureau. This is an invaluable service you're providing to residents before they cast their votes. I have had the opportunity to travel all across our great state and work with so many different kinds of governments, from county level, city level, township level. I've seen what works, I've seen what doesn't work. I've solved challenges and I look forward to solving the challenges here in Shakopee, the known and the unknown. And I look forward to being an accessible representative for the people, being regularly available for people to come to them, express their concern, share their vision for the future, and they should feel comfortable doing that as our locally-elected officials. So thank you again. My name is Nathan Dole, and I humbly ask for your vote by November, November 8th.
And Jim Delaney.
This is my second time writing. My reasons for writing have not changed. They are my disappointment in the city council's decisions on debt, taxes, and voices not being heard. My example is my property tax has gone up 45% since 2005, 7% in the last year, and expect to go up again in the coming year. Our city debt jumped in 2016 to over 30 million. It hasn't come down since then. It's higher now than it was then. The root cause for this is repeated 4-1 vote on the decisions that influence the debt and taxes. I call this vote, this 4-1 vote, a voting status quo voting. It's a safe Vegas bet that there's a vote on debt and taxes will always be 4-1. I'm not a status quo voter type of person. I look at the long-term and short-term impact of decisions. I also look at the pros and cons before I come to my conclusions. And most importantly, if I'm elected as a representative, I will look to see where that decision aligns with the priorities of, of the residents in our city before we make that decision. We can all agree on two things. Our city needs to get to a reasonable, stable property tax and also agree that our city needs to get to a, minimize our long-term debt. If you agree with me on this, then you want to hold the line on debt and taxes, I'm your candidate. Thank you.
As we close this candidate forum, please remember that the views expressed in tonight's debate are those of the candidates, not those of the chamber and visitors bureau. The chamber sponsors this event as a service to the community and has gone to extraordinary lengths to ensure the objectivity of this forum. The chamber does not endorse any candidate. Instead, we seek to provide the businesses and voters of Shakopee with the information you need to make informed choices when you vote. Thank you to the audience this evening and to River Valley Church for hosting this event. On behalf of the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau, thank you to all of the candidates for being willing to serve and for being with us tonight. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th. Please remember to vote.